Good morning. It's March 26th, 9:00 AM. I will call the meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners to order with clerk, please call or roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Okay, if you're pleased, please, if you're able to stand, join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on the agenda. Are there any members that would like, of the public, like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of the approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of payroll, approval of the official results and election summary, the approval of the 2023 township annual reports, the approval of the 2023 cemetery district annual reports, the approval of the county commission minutes for February the 20th, February the 27th, March the 5th, and March the 12th, the approval of the contract with DRCL Electric for Rural Fire District 5 for station generators, the approval of the Health Department Annual Aid Local Grant Signature Page for SFY 2025, and the approval of the Central Kansas Regional Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant, SFY 2025 Health Department as fiscal agent. Are there any items that any of the commissioners would like removed from the, or any questions?
I would, I would like to ask that the county clerk give us a brief, whatever, what is our role with the cemetery district annual reports? I don't think there are any county cemeteries under our guidance, but what is our role? Just to make sure that they have their ducks in a row on their, their budgets, or what is our role?
Your role on the township annual reports, as well as the cemetery annual reports, is just to review them, excuse me, is just to review them each year. We look them over, we help them prepare their budgets throughout the year, just as the administrator helps with the county budget. We do the same process for township and cemetery districts, but it's just for you to, to look at what they're doing and, and see how they're budgeting their, their cemeteries and townships.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment after reviewing the township reports. In the past, there was an erosion of their funds, and I noticed this year that all but one of them had a small gain in funds, and I believe that's due to the amount of money they have to spend for public notifications and notices that they, that were quite costly to them, so I appreciate the fact that, that they were able to find a more cheaper way to get their publications made.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the consent agenda as given.
Second motion.
We have a motion as second to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, passes five zero. That will move us into our action items.
Healthcare Services Contract for Saline County Jail with Sheriff Roger Solden.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Sheriff.
I'll give you a little history on this and then give you what I'm bringing in front of you. We've, we've contracted with a company called Advanced Correctional Healthcare since 2015, and every year we sign a, an extension with that contract. We were expecting about a 5% increase this year. In February, I met with the leadership from them, they, they said they were going to come and give me a proposal. They wanted to change my healthcare to all RNs, you know, right now we have one RN and, and a couple of LPNs. That was going to come with a pretty good increased cost, but they couldn't give me a number, and I asked them for a quote. It didn't ever come, and then on March 12th, I received notice from the president of their company that they were severing our contract affecting, effective April 11th. I immediately responded that it's hard for me to come to an agreement when I never had a proposal from them, and she did, she did then respond with a proposal that would change my contract to $909,993 a year. That's about an 87% increase over what I had currently, you know, I was expecting five, and I didn't have enough in my budget to cover that increase in contract. Unfortunately, this is not, not solely coming just to me, it's been happening with sheriffs all over the state that have, that have used their services. So I reached out to some of the sheriffs that had already changed, and one of the companies, or the company that has picked up most of the larger agencies was Turnkey Health Clinics, and I contacted Art Rose, and I've known Art for some time, as a matter of fact, Art was representative with ACH when we went with them back in 2015. But Art, one of the things I was under was a time crunch because I have to have my healthcare for the inmates. I'd contacted the county administrator, we'd talked about it, there's no way for me to do an RFP, we have 30 days to wait for it to come back, and then we have to go through it and vet it and all that, that takes more than the time I had allotted. I did work with the county counselor as well, and due to the emergency nature of this, we got a proposal from Turnkey Health Clinics. They came in with a proposal that's at an annual cost, starting annual cost of $568,780.30. I've got $669,000 in my budget for medical this year. In order to get in their queue, because as you imagine, there's a little bit of startup time, I, Art said if we could get a contract going, they could provide me services, interrupted services, start in April 12th. I did sign a contract with them, and I'm here simply this morning for, to give you guys the opportunity to ratify the contract I signed with ACH, or with Turnkey Health Clinics, and I've got Art here with me if you have questions of him or anything about their services that they'll provide.
Is this an annual contract every year, or is it a three-year contract, or how's this, how's this work?
This, this initial contract is, it's annual, but it's, it's got up to four years proposed in it, but just like the contract that we had with ACH, there's, there's, there's an out clause, you can get out of the contract. We did go with at least a three-month out on this one, because of my experience, I just, I went through, that's, that's not a good feeling when you find out you're losing your healthcare in, in 30 days.
Roger, it doesn't say here exactly what we paid last year. I assume it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000, let's see, it would be a little less than $500,000 if we had a $420,000 increase, so this is still an increase.
Yeah, it's, it's still an increase. Our current contract with ACH was, was $485,999, so $486,000.
Does that include 24-hour service? I mean, is there someone there at the jail 24 hours?
They're not there 24 hours, but what they are there is every day, every day for at least 12 hours a day, and they do all of our medication pass, so, so the officers don't distribute medications to inmates, the nurses do that, and so they, they're there for response, for emergencies during the day, but this will be the same thing after hours at night if we have a medical emergency, we'll have to take them to the hospital. They do have someone on call if it's something that's, that seems to be not emergent, but somebody needs to talk to them about it right now, they've got a 24-hour on-call person that we can contact, make that phone call, but, you know, just like, just like when you're at home, you know, the things you can call the doctor to see about, and there are things you have to take them to the ER for, and that's.
Turnkey Health Clinics is located where?
Oklahoma.
Oklahoma?
Mm-hmm.
Are, are there no local people, and I'm not speaking against that company whatsoever, but I mean, will Turnkey have to import people, or will they hire locals, or how does that work?
Actually, typically what's happening, and I think Art indicated, we've had, they've had some contact, typically what happens is the nurses, the nurses that we have simply change companies. Typically, they pick up the nursing staff we already have, so the, those employees don't lose their, their jobs, but correctional healthcare is a little bit different than others, and, and that's one of the options we did explore with the county administrator, we did explore, seeing if one of the local clinics would be interested in picking it up temporarily till we could get some onboard, and then that wasn't an interest to them.
Well, and I mean, my thought was, I, I don't know whether Slana Regional or any of the health clinics have, having a division that would do something like that, or even think about doing something like that, but that might be something we think about in the, in the future. It's, it's, it's a pretty big pill to swallow, or it would have been for the $423,000 increase would have been, more than most of our department's budget for an annual year is, so just this increase is going to be still a pretty stiff one for the next year. That's what I have, or questions?
Is there any gap? You said that, you know, they dropped you, and then you're looking at, and you signed a contract, is there any gap in there right now, or is it going to just seamlessly go right on in?
As seamlessly as these things can go. April 11th is, will be ACH's last day, April 12th will be Turnkey's first day, but they, they plan to be onsite a couple days ahead of time, just to make sure everything's.
So we may have a 24-hour period gap?
No, I don't, I don't think we'll have any gap at all.
Okay, good, okay.
ACH should be done at midnight on April the 11th, and we'll be set up to go at 12:01.
There you go.
Roger, how long have we been with Advanced Healthcare?
Since 2015.
2015?
Yes.
Hmm, I see that here.
You mentioned, Sheriff, that there's a four-year extension to this contract. Is there a, a set rate of?
Yes, that's included, they have, they have, they've laid out the increases for the next four years, and Art has copies of that, if you'd like to see copies of that, I can, he can provide you with that.
Okay, any more questions from the Commission?
I'd like to see.
Oh, okay.
What these little creases look like.
Okay.
While I was doing that, I would ask it, what, what level of care does it take to then to send them on to, to the emergency room or hospitalization, or?
Thank you, thank you.
Is there, is there a benchmark there, I assume?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a bench, if it's anything that the nursing staff can't take care of, if, you know, if they're having cardiac issues, or any kind of broken bones that need to be set, just, just anything that your doctor could treat you for in your, in his office, they pretty well take care of for the most part. Anything that you'd need to go to the hospital for, we, we have to send them, so.
Well, unfortunately, this looks like it's going to be one of those things that we have to do, whether we like it or not. We've, we've got to have the service, we're bound by the, the state statutes to, to do this, and it appears that this is our best avenue that's been offered to us, and I don't, I don't think we have a choice.
Quick, quick question here, is that when you mentioned there that you have a line item budget of $607,000 to cover this here, does your, when you have to take to the ERs and stuff throughout the year, or for other medical expenses, does that come out of the same line item?
That comes out of that same.
Okay.
Line item, yeah, and prescription medications comes out of that same line item, and.
Okay.
Any other services that we have to have done, whether it's x-rays or any of that comes out of the same line item.
So we're draining that down pretty low, then?
Yeah, it's, and it's hard, it's very hard to predict, because, you know, some years, nothing happens, and some years we have an incident where someone gets injured, and, and, you know, I know earlier this year, we had a hip replacement, and it wasn't one of those we could put off, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's very unpredictable when you have that many people in custody.
With your new facility, there was an emphasis on, on medical and, and mental wellness. Are we utilizing that to the, to the best?
As much as we can, yep, we just, there are some things that the nurses can't treat in-house, and that's, that'd be when we have to take people to the hospital, but.
It's a little bit surprising to me that with the new jail and the facilities, the improved facilities and the expansion of everything, and all the up-to-date things that we have done there from 30 years ago or whatever, it's amazing that they would take this avenue to, to now to say no, and, I mean, obviously, they've got to understand that we're probably going to say no because of a $400,000 increase, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand it, but it's not, we're not alone, that's, I don't.
I get it.
The direction of the company, I suppose.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make the motion that we approve RFA 2024 number dash 49 as presented for healthcare services contract for the Saline County Jail.
Okay, before we do that, can we see, is there any, is there any public comment? Anybody on Zoom? Okay?
Okay, now, sorry, now we'll go.
I've already made the motion.
I second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion as second to approve that contract with TK, can I have a vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same thing, carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution for appointments to Planning Commission with Tim Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
This is just a consideration of a resolution reappointing Brett Ferguson, Paul Fennell, Don Merriman, Ken Stromberg to be reappointed for another three-year term. They've served with the Planning Commission for a while and have expressed that they want to continue serving for another three years. We also, on this resolution, will be appointing Kathleen Malone Crouch to fill the vacancy that was left upon the passing of Kai Woodrich last year, and so that term will, heard, that the rest of that term will expire on March 31st, 2025. These others that we will be reappointing, the other current members will expire on March 31st, 2027. So staff is recommending reappointment of these current planning commissioners, as well as the new appointment of Kathleen Malone Crouch to fill the vacancy.
Okay, any comments?
Well, I would say that, first of all, thank you to those that have served in the past and that are willing to serve another term, that's kind of a thankless job, and you can get involved in some heat from time to time, as we've seen. Also, Kathleen Malone Crouch is, I thank you to her for stepping up, saying she would do this, she's an obvious, really good choice, she knows the ins and outs of the Planning Commission, having worked there for several years, so it's, it's kind of a no-brainer for me, but again, thank you to those of you that have served in the past and that are willing to go for another term.
Any other questions? Any comment from the public? Okay, bring it back to Commission for Action.
With that, I will move that we adopt Resolution 24 dash 2402 as presented.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve Resolution 202402 as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that passes five zero. Thank you, Tim. Number three.
Bid award for Rural Fire District Number Five Station Roofs with Chief David Turner, Rural Fire District Number Five.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We went out for bids for both the station roofs. We opened bids March 11th, we received three bids for the proposed project. The first bid was from Diamond Roofing Manhattan, Kansas, for $56,910. The second bid was from Danker Roofing out of Manhattan, Kansas, for a bid amount of $74,237, and then we received the last bid from Ryan Roofing for their bid total at Staff recommends awarding the bid to Ryan Roofing for the amount of $50,484.86. Budget impact, we're using the remaining of our ARPA grant, ARPA grant that we received back in February, we have $32,150 from that grant to be used for the roofs, with the additional $18,334.86 coming from the district's budget line item, 039-155-842-000.
What's that, what's that take your operating budget down to, once you take that $18,000 out of there?
Of the, still have $20,000, I believe.
Okay.
Excuse me, maybe $10,000, I think I had $30,000 to start, so.
And is this just like a total membrane type roofing going on there?
That's what Ryan Roofing, they're going to put the membrane over the top of the existing roof.
And you only end up getting one bid back from the local?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Any comment from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back up to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve RFA 2024 dash 45 as presented.
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024 dash 45, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that passes five zero. Thank you.
Have a great day.
Rural Fire District Three Architect for Schematic Design with Chief Scott Abker.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Rural Fire District Number Three is in the process of building a new fire station in Brookville. The district's been working with the city of Brookville to purchase some land, and a survey was, of the prospective location was completed, and the county counselor actually has the real estate agreement done now. Fire District used, or issued a request for proposals for the schematic design of the new fire station on January 24th. We received two responses, WDM Architects and M Squared Architects. The review committee consisted of three board members from the Fire District and county staff, we met on March the 1st to review those proposals. WDM Architects ranked the highest in all of the evaluation criteria and was determined to be the best and most responsive proposal. This request for action is to enter into an agreement with WDM Architects for schematic design services for a lump sum of $7,950 plus $141 in reimbursable expenses. That totals not to exceed $8,091. Other phases such as design development, construction documents, and the construction phase were included in the proposal, but will come later as we move forward. Once the site's been acquired, and we know a few more details about what's going to be required for elevation studies and flood surveys and that, that type of stuff, so WDM's proposal for all tech services of all phases not to exceed $43,886. So our alternatives are either to accept this, or maybe give us some idea of another direction you'd like for us to go. Staff would recommend that we pursue WDM Architects to start this project and get it underway.
Scott, I was out there the other day, the dirt work they've done out there right now where the, what, what is all that dirt work they've done?
Well, the city of Brookville cleaned up that whole site, which was, which is referred to as the commons area. What they primarily use that for is for city residents to bring their brush and trees and stuff down there, and they pile it all up, and then they burn it. Over the years, that had gotten a little out of sync or chaotic, you know how that stuff goes, it gets neglected, and other things get dumped down there. So recently, they hired, I believe it was Dale McHaleb to clean up that site, and so they took out all those trees and things that were on the, what would be the southeast corner of that property, they cleaned all that up, they filled in what used to be the mud volleyball pits for when they had their Labor Day celebration, and they, they've basically just left that remaining dirt for us, for whatever we need to use it for, for our flood elevation, and then we'll have to go in there and, and spread that out and compact it and make sure our soil studies. have to go in there and spread that out and compact it and make sure our soil studies come out right when we, when we get ready to build. But that's what the dirt is, they're still there for.
Okay. And what timeline are we looking to get the final on purchasing that part of the land that we need up there for that?
So the Fire Board met last night and we ratified the agreement that was drawn up by Mike Montoya. And so the next opportunity for us to meet with Brookville City Council is April the 8th. And we will get their signature. And then we will be back to you as soon as possible after that for the county commissioner to sign off on that agreement and we can make that purchase.
Okay. So we are purchasing that part of the land up there and the existing is still going to be owned by the county until we decide what we're going to do with it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Chief, how many stations are currently in operation for Fire District number three?
We have four stations currently.
Four stations, so this will make it five?
No, no, no. Well, I guess it will be five until we decide what we're going to do with the other stations.
So you're, it's going to be, this is going to be built in, and take the place of another?
Correct.
That's the long range term?
Yep.
And I want to reiterate with our administrator that the costs associated with this are, they come from the budget of the rural fire districts and it's not a cost to the county itself.
Yes, the, like several of the other rural fire districts, District Three is receiving $95,000 in ARPA funding, which is paying for several of these expenses. But long term, the cost to actually construct the station will be either a lease purchase or some type of arrangement that will be covered by the mill levy for District Three, not the countywide mill levy.
Correct, which is paid for by the taxpayers within that fire district, not countywide. So thank, again, volunteer wise, thank you.
You bet.
Chief Abker, your last station build was up on Headville Road?
That one took place prior to Bavaria. Our last station build was in Bavaria.
Okay. And what is the payoff on the Headville? When will, is that paid for now?
All of our stations are paid for now. The Bavaria Station was the last one that we had a lease agreement for. And it was for 10 years and that's been paid for.
And that was a lease agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not that it has anything to do with this request, but how many square miles does your, does your Station Three cover?
We cover two townships in Ellsworth County. So that'd be, what, 30, 72 miles, 72 square miles in Ellsworth County and then 240.
Pretty, pretty big area.
I think that's what, we've just recently done some other grant work and so Chris and I have been working on that. But I believe the rest of our district inside Saline County is about 240 square miles.
Do you receive funding from the Ellsworth County townships in also?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. You do?
It doesn't show up in our budget in that way, so I don't know that. Chris probably knew that. He's our treasurer, so.
Any other questions? Any comment from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2024 dash 46 as presented.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024 dash 46. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Bid award for 2024 crack sealing with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So yeah, so I'm here to request to award the bid for bituminous crack sealing. Sealed bids were open on March 11th at 11 o'clock and we only received one bid. You should have a packet of the, in your packet of the bid tabs. So even though we only received one bid, it is from the contractor that has typically done our work in the past and do a great job. And their bid prices, their unit prices were nearly identical to last year's prices. So I'm pretty happy with the bid. So the roads to receive crack seals, they were prioritized into two categories. You should have a map also in your packet. The roads that are marked with a red line are priority one roads. Those roads have to be completed by August 5th because those roads will also receive a chip seal this year. And then the priority two roads, which are marked in blue, they've got to be completed by December 9th of this year. And as what we've done, you know, in the past, there's not going to be any work allowed during weed harvest activities. They got to pull off the road during that time. Alternatives for action would be to accept the bid as indicated in staff recommendation and to reject the bid and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends accepting the bid from Payment Pros LLC for the amount of estimated work to equal $130,480. Funds for this work will be taken out of our contractual asphalt work, which has a current balance of $2.8 million. However, other work that'll come out of that line item is going to be our hot mix overlay work, our chip seal, and our aggregate shouldering. Any questions?
I'm happy to hear it was not a big increase over last year.
Yes.
Justin, you'd mentioned that, I know it's like last year when they did this, that they, the rock that they provided was just really good stuff, but they won't be able to provide that same?
Well, this is, this is for a crack seal. You're referring to a chip seal.
Chip seal.
And we're actually opening bids for a chip seal here 11 o'clock today. So we'll be talking about that here shortly.
Okay, this is the?
A crack seal.
Crack seal.
Yeah, this is where the ratter out there, the existing cracks, and then they'll put rubber material down in, inside of the crack.
Well, and I've just, then that brings up another question here is that, I see here on the priority two that you have from Ohio, on Waterwell Road, from Ohio to Simpson. And that was just chipping sealed last year, wasn't it? And now we're having to go back and crack seal it this year?
Let me pull out my map.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure it's probably been two years, but it seemed like it was just last year.
Are you referring to which, which road?
Waterwell, from Ohio to Simpson. I see the blue line there. Then I was reading this and it's so.
Oh, yes. So yeah, so there's, so what they're, what they're going to do is the, what was it? There was an, we did an overlay on that, but really from the Saline River Bridge going east to Simpson. And so we're backing up to Ohio just to pick up those, you know, the part that didn't receive an overlay. And then, because, and then a lot of times your overlays, you'll have reflective cracks coming up right away, you know. And so we want to get those sealed, you know, before those cracks get bigger. And so, yeah, there's usually, we're going to do a crack seal pretty quick after an overlay.
Okay. And so in the past, or sometimes do we not do a crack seal before we do the overlay?
No, that's correct. We do not. Because those cracks are going to come up no matter what. Those reflective cracks, whether you seal, you know, the existing cracks in the pavement, your pavement's still moving right there. And they're, they're going to show up no matter what you do.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, any questions from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2024 dash 42 as presented.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024 dash 42. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes five zero.
Thank you. Road vacation, portions of Matson Road and Farley Road with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Hello again. So Todd Roeburg, which is the owner of American Sand and Gravel filed a road vacation application to vacate portions of Matson Road and Farley Road. In your packet, you should have a map of the proposed vacation as well as a resolution and the resolution exhibit, which provides a legal description of the proposed vacation. Todd Roeburg filed the petition on behalf of the property owner who owns property on both sides of Matson Road. And so I did give a presentation to the board here probably about a month ago with this project. So the clerk's office has sent certified mail to the adjacent landowners and mail notices to all homeowners along Matson Road as well as AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T has an existing line that utilizes that existing right of way. So part of the vacation resolution has to allow a utility, to maintain a utility easement along there so AT&amp;T can have access to their line. Also, so with the approval of the road vacation, the right of way shall revert to the adjacent property owner and Saline County Road Bridge shall be released from any responsibilities for maintaining the road. Also, if the road vacation is approved, the resolution will be filed with the county clerk and the register of deeds office. Alternatives for action would be to adopt Resolution 24 dash 2401 and vacate portions of Matson Road and Farley Road. Or two, do not adopt the resolution and Road Bridge will continue to maintain Matson Road as an open public road. Staff recommends to vacate the portions of Matson Road and Farley Road according to Resolution 24 dash 2401. As far as any kind of budget impact, you know, this really does eliminate any future, you know, maintenance needs along that portion of road that Road and Bridge would have. So, any questions?
Justin, what's that length of that road on Matson there?
Oh, boy.
That's going to be vacated?
It is... Is it about half a mile? Little less than half a mile. So, yeah. Because I believe, I was thinking the section corner is kind of on the south, south end of the houses on there. So it's, you know, probably a third of a mile.
What type of an impact does this have on the landowner?
As far as on the, the adjacent landowners, there's going to be no impact to them. As far as the houses that are to the south of there, the shosh should be pretty minimal impact. Because really, Matson Road, as you go from the residential houses to the north, it just dead end at the, at the river, you know. So there was no, you know, we're not taking away a secondary, you know, access, access point for them. They're really, the road didn't go, go anywhere anyway.
Do we have any idea how much that road has traveled right now at all? Or who's using that road?
Very, very little. It's really the only people who use that road were the ones who were farming, you know, farms the ground on either side.
As you said, it's a dead end road now, right?
Correct.
And the landowners on both sides have not shown any resistance to this?
No. So Gary Harbin owns both sides of the road now. And so, yeah, he's, he's very in favor of the vacation.
Then I'm very in favor of it also. It alleviates the county of the responsibility of maintaining the road that's not even used to speak of. So there's no, no point to stand in the way of this as far as I'm concerned.
By the looks of the map you have here, Justin, it looks like Farley Road is one of those, one of those roads that the river seems to be impeding upon. And, and there could be a, for us to keep that as a road, there is going to be some expenses.
Right.
Looks like fairly quickly.
Yeah. And Farley Road, there was actually no road around the river there. There was right of way, but there was, there wasn't a road. So it, I'm thinking it might have been vacated a while ago.
The, the portion of red that you're showing us?
The portion of Farley Road that goes around the river, I might have said vacated. The right of way is there, but the road, road doesn't exist.
Okay, so there is no road there?
No, we're just vacating the right of way.
Okay.
And, yeah, there probably hadn't been a road even on that Matson or that Farley probably for 50 years. I mean, it's like, it's because the tree line is growing up down through there. But it's like, it's still, one of my main issues here is coming off on the Farley Road, going around that bend where we're, we're vacating the red, but then to the east going up to, see on Farley, that'd be going up to Holmes Road.
Holmes Road, yeah, it's the next road to the east.
Is that when you end up just to the right of that, where this black line is here on this map, is that, you know, somebody's got to put a gate in there or something because there's still going to be, this road going down through here is still going to be viable to anybody wanting to go dump trash and?
Which is, I mean, it's been like that right now.
Right. But that's what I'm saying is that if we're getting rid of this red area around that river bend there, why not go?
There, there is a process. It's, you know, it's typically comes from the adjacent landowners. If, you know, people are going down on a dead end road and dumping trash, there is a process where we can gate, gate a public road.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, any questions from the public? Would you like to step forward, please? You'd like to state your name and your address and try to limit it to three minutes, please?
My name is Charles Soash. I live at 4888 South Matson Road. And I do not want that road closed. That road will be our only road out of there. Right now, you have a massive problem that you probably, some of you may have looked at it. I know at least one of you has looked at it. Matson Road to the south needs to be fixed right now. If you've been out there, that area where the bales are sitting on the south side of the curve, any major rain event, that will, will put the road next to the river. So we need that road open so that we can go out and go out of that whole thing. Matson Road's already been fixed twice. It's been moved over for $350,094. It was not done right because the county and whoever approved some idiot from Mississippi or Alabama that backfilled it with field dirt from the river. Rained again in 95. They had to come in and put $550,000 on it again to do it right. And that's just a small portion where it curved out. They also had to buy their land, moved it over. The next thing is, this time is not going to work so well because where it's coming out is south of that curve. It's right up against it. You will have to put in, I have no idea what the current regulations are, but at one time it was a 45 degree slope with jetties now or whatever. I don't know. I deal with the government all the time and it changes daily. So who knows what their, the corps' current regulations are. Anyway, to do land, to do that, you're going to have to go into eminent domain and to the neighbors to acquire enough land to move the road over to make your slope. You're going to have to do that right now. You have a problem right now. We have a major rain event this summer. It'll put, it'll put the bales in the river probably. You have a problem on the north side of that. I had them move the utility pole last summer because the pole was, the bottom of the pole was showing in a major rain, windstorm. And so they moved it a little bit to the north. But that whole thing is going to come out on the north side of that, which is not that big a deal because the road's not, you still have a few years there. The other major thing on the whole thing is that since we moved there, that has migrated towards Mentor Road. You have a major problem in the future where Mentor Road's going to have a problem with that whole river going not only into Matson Road, it's going to be going into Mentor Road.
Charlie, I hate to cut you off, but we're at our three minutes.
What's that?
I said, we're at our three minutes. I hate to cut you off, but.
Well, I don't want to cut him off just yet. I have a question. It involves Justin here.
Okay.
That we properly notified the landowners and you said we had and we hadn't had any opposition, but now we have opposition. Now, my question is, on this red part of this line, and your home is on Matson Road, but that portion of the Matson Road is not going to be, what do I want to call it? It's going to be closed. It's still going to be open. We'll still have to maintain that, that portion of the road that you live on.
Exactly. But what I'm?
You can't go out. You can't go out to the north anyway, right?
Not now, but, but you will have to make some way to get out because we cannot go out to the south when they fix that road.
Well, it's been, it's that way now, though, wasn't it?
What do you mean it's that way now?
Well, I mean, this road, I thought was dead-end there.
It is, but we could go to the, to the north. We just, we can drive around the road to Farley and get out if we have to. We have done that in the past. It's already taken the road out to the south. Once, it's literally gone into the road.
What east-west road is south of you there?
Pardon?
What east-west road is south of Matson Road where you live?
Mentor Road.
Mentor Road, so... That's your avenue to get out of there now, is that correct?
Exactly, and we don't have, when that washes out, like I said, I had two rain events at my farm in Jewel County that would have washed that thing out already last year and the year before. We're just lucky it hasn't washed it out now. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I guess my, my, my position is that I don't see how us vacating Matson Road to the north, being it's already a dead-end road, is going to affect your ability to...
Because we need the road open, rebuilt, so that we can get out of there, is what we need. Unless you're, you know, if you want to, here's your chance to get that rebuilt. If he wants to put up a couple million-dollar bond to, to fix that, you're going to have to do it sometime. You're going to have to do it sometime.
Not if it's vacated.
The easiest one to fix is going north and out. What I'm trying to tell you is, going south is going to cost you a lot of money. It's going to cost you a lot of money anyway because at the end of, of Mentor Road going west, when that goes west, if you look straight west, when you're going down Mentor Road before, clear down and going from Jewel, because it's not even on your map. That whole deal has ran into Mentor Road there. That has been fixed and put a riff-raff on the corner, on that at the end of Mentor Road. That's all been fixed for a ways. But that whole peninsula, Hammond, has farmed that whole thing. It's gone. In the 40 years we've lived out there, that whole thing's gone. And that will be running into Mentor Road on that curve.
Well, Charlie, it sounds like to me that we need to, yeah, it sounds like to me what we need to do is take a look at Mentor Road and figure out what we need to do to Mentor Road so you can get out on Mentor Road instead of...
We got, we got to get there first.
Yeah, it's, there, there is a lot of issues. And one of the things when, when I drove in and looked at it, and I think that, and we probably need to let Justin talk a little bit, but it's like when I went down it multiple times, is that, that was one of my questions that, when it come up, was is that just in the last year where we had, or last two years where we went around the county and had to buy right-of-way to get away from the, the road going away from the rivers, that was my exact thought there, is that we're already into that same problem right there, right now. But, and I think that if you want to talk on that at all...
Yeah, so, you know, as far as the, the channel erosion and migration at Mentor Road, you know, that, that's a project that I brought you up, brought up to you guys last week at the study session. You know, as we know, it's a problem and hopefully we can, you know, start working on some kind of a solution there. As far as going north, you know, right now, you know, if a road was rebuilt going north, we still have the same problem. You know, on Farley Road, you know, there's huge erosion, you know, and that, that whole stream bed is migrating, you know, migrating south, you know, so it's, it's the same problem. Anywhere where we got a road close to the Smokieo River, it's, you've got a problem with, with channel migration because nature's always going to win. You know, as far as going south of the houses, you know, the, you know, Todd Roeburg is going to be improving that road. He's trying to acquire right-of-way right now and improve that road. But right where it is in the, where there's a curve in Matson Road, right there at the, the river, we can't really do a whole lot besides put the road right back where it's at. You know, for, for a section right through there, is it an ideal spot to be at? No. But it's the best we can do right now. And, and you know, and if, if there's a flood event that, you know, washes out the road, you know, all we can do is, you know, what we've always done in the past, we've got to get it open as soon as we can so we can, people can have access, you know, in and out of their, their property, their houses, you know, and then hopefully there's a, you know, a FEMA, FEMA event that, that can help us, you know, pay to repair it and mitigate it.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks to me like it would take a lot more money to correct the problem to the north than it would to correct the problem to the south.
That's correct.
Now, if we go ahead with this vacation of this road, I, I think we need to realize that there is an issue with the part to the south and prioritize that to get it fixed, the Mentor Road portion of it, so that you do have an access, exit access to it. It, it looks to me like if we're going to go back and fix the north part, that, that's been that way for what? How many years? Lots and lots and lots of years. And I, and to fix that now doesn't seem to me to be cost-effective when we could be, money would be better spent to the south than to the north.
I think that Mentor Road needs to be on our radar right now.
Well, I am not so sure it's the Mentor Road as much as it is Madison Road. I mean, getting those, those two houses to, from that north end of this road here that we're vacating, just to the south end of that red road right there, there's those two houses right there. So, it's between there and Mentor Road is what the main concern is to me. So, it's not Mentor Road, it's, it's this South Madison Road that we need to be concerned with. I mean, to me, that's...
Yeah, and, you know, and as, you know, I brought up last week at a study session, you know, I'm going to, you know, be talking to an engineer, you know, trying to bring an engineer on board to evaluate, not just that, but we've got several sites in the county, you know, and have them evaluate and try to go after some funds to, yeah, to repair several sites.
The portion of Matson Road that is not being vacated is still the responsibility of Celine County.
Yes.
And we need to adhere to this and prioritize that to get that part of it fixed and as we move along.
Yeah, so the, the problem, there's not an issue with the road right now. It's just as that stream is, you know, keeps migrating, you know, keep, keep moving, that's, that's where it's an issue. And that is beyond Road and Bridge Maintenance Department to correct something like that. It's, that's going to have to be part of a lot bigger project.
Part of the, part of the issues of living close to a river?
Yes.
Well, what we're, what we're facing, though, is are we going to vacate Matson Road or not? The other part of it is a separate issue, what we're going to do for maintenance to...
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is June Ferguson. I live at 4844 South Matson Road. The first thing I would think I would like to address is the question about why we didn't oppose before and we're opposing now. The problem is, we were not notified of any of this activity before. There was some, of course, I have no proof. It seemed to me like the requirement to send out the notification to the adjacent landowners, they, they originally said it would be from this property line on, which excluded us. But suddenly, now, the new road that they have built is right at our property line. So, it definitely affects us now. So, that's why we're, we're having complaints now. I think the main thing that concerns me is, it seems like there's an awful lot of cart before the horse. The, we're here today, or you're here today to vote to vacate or not, but they have already built a road across the field north of, of our property. We are concerned, and we had spoken with Justin, we are concerned about what that's going to do since it's the floodplain, floodway. They've built up portions of the road that are above, you know, they've built it up higher. I don't know if they got the permit, the floodplain fill permit, which it's my understanding they are required to get that if they want to build the road higher than one foot above the ground level. And I don't know if they've gotten that or not, but they've, it seems like there's an awful lot of, with the cup permit, you know, they have requirements, they can't do certain things. But those things are going on now while they're preparing to open the pit. You know, they're storing materials in places that shouldn't be stored. They are going up and down our road a lot. They've built their access road across their property, but we're just...
Well, that's still a public road. They, I mean, they have a...
No, what they built isn't a public road.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that, but you're saying there, the use of Matson Road is a public road, so they can do that. What they do on their property, and I'm not, withstanding of what you just said about the height, I'm not sure about what the legalities are there, but, I mean, what somebody does on their property really isn't under our...
Well, when we're in the floodplain, there is an issue there. And plus, the other part of it is, part of their cup, what was laid out in the cup was that Matson Road would be improved for them to have the increased truck traffic. So, there's a lot of increased truck traffic there, and the road is not improved. So, like I said, it's just sort of the cart before the horse. And I feel like Todd Roeburg isn't being very forthcoming. Like I said, it's like, well, let's just change the, the area where we need to notify the neighbors. Like I said, apparently, we weren't within the first area, but suddenly now, we're within it. So, I just don't, we just don't understand.
Well, that, that is not Mr. Roeburg's responsibility to notify the landowners. That, that falls on Celine County. If we haven't done that, then we're at fault there. I would certainly agree with you, but I don't, I don't know.
Well, I just didn't know, it seemed to me like, you know, where the property line was, was changed in the interim there, you know, so... But I think that's all I, thank you.
Todd Roeburg, 2539 Dundee. I'd like to just make a few comments about this, so... One, we went through the process of the conditional use permit with the county, which was approved. And that notification that she's referring to was during that process. And that notification is based upon the location of where our sand mining operation was going to be, not necessarily the edge of the property. We plan no sand mining operation along Matson Road. The, as far as, as our private road going into there, we hired KLA Environmental Engineering to do a hydraulic study, which was required, and that was sent to Corps of Engineers, DWR, you know, so that, that, before we ever did anything, that was all approved through there. So, you know, I'm not sure. But, and as far as Matson Road, our conditional use permit required us to improve Matson Road from the north-south to Mentor. We're, so we hired Call Valley Engineering, and Call Valley worked with Justin to design the improvements for that road. And we're spending approximately $300,000 to $400,000 of our own money improving Matson Road from the north out to Mentor. We haven't started on that yet because we're requiring right-of-way. Gary gave us right-of-way across some of his property. We just signed that agreement. And we have to require some, another piece of right-of-way from Audi. We have the documents drawn up. We just haven't got that signed yet. So, and our agreement was, before we haul any material out of there, we haven't hauled any material out of that site. We have run a few trucks down there to bring equipment in there to work, along with the farming operations going in there. They're doing some cleanup down there of trees. So, until Matson Road gets improved, I mean, we're not hauling any material out of that site, so... But we're, you know, if I would have had more time, I probably would have come up here and wanted to argue about us having to spend $300,000 to $400,000 to upgrade a county road. But it was something that got put on us, and I just decided not to come up here and try to argue about that. So, we're just going to foot that out of our own pocket.
What is the advantage to American Sand and Gravel to have Matson Road vacated? What, what, what's, what dog do you have in that hunt? Why, why is that an advantage to you to close that road?
It isn't to me, honestly, because it, I mean, it's still, it's our, it would, we would just improve that across there. We're, we're doing it to help Gary Harbin because he has two connecting grounds, and he wants to combine that into a larger piece of farm ground. I mean, I would still have access across there. I probably would be coming to you at that point and asking, why aren't you maintaining? I would, I would ask for you to maintain Matson Road to the north because it's not maintained now. It was just a dirt path. So, it would be more road that, you know, maybe we would have to improve it the first time, but we, we would be asking for that to be maintained from now on out for our use. As it is now, going where we're wanting to vacate, going north, we put in a private road, and we're going to have to maintain that forever instead of the county maintaining going north.
So, so if I'm thinking this through, the advantage to closing Matson Road is actually to Dr. Harbin to connect the farm ground?
Correct.
That's what we're really talking about. It's not about American Sand and gravel.
Right.
And you're, you're, he's gave you access to go across his land to build a road for your private use?
I have an easement to go across Gary's ground to build our private road across there.
Okay, that, now, now I'm to the bottom of...
If we didn't do that, then we would be going down Matson to the north, and then we would be wanting the county to maintain that from now on.
I understand that.
So, I just wanted to point out a few things that I don't think maybe everybody understood, so...
And I know last, last, what was that, two weeks ago, when you come in front of us with this, that's like, you had, on your paperwork, you had a road kind of designed where this was going to be beside the current Madison Road?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I had a map where it was just a line, nothing surveyed. It was going in about this direction, kind of to the northwest from the, the last house there.
Yep.
So, yes.
With, with the improvements that are in agreement that will be done, it sounds like there is some land being acquired to relocate Matson a little to the east? Is that what I'm hearing?
So, yeah, so we're, there's actually two spots. So, where there's, I'm going to kind of divide Matson into two sections. So, there's kind of to the north of where the, the curve is in the road, where it goes around the, the river bend. So, that section is going to be realigned. It's, the road's going to be moved to the east. So, instead of following the river around, it's going to kind of, to shoot off at a, kind of a tangent to that, that curve. Side distance will be greatly improved through there. That was my biggest concern, is just having the side distance around the river because you're always going to have trees and, you know, with all the vegetation right there. So, yeah, so there's, there's some realignment through there. And then where the residential houses are at, we're going to shift the road a little bit to the east, you know, to minimize the impact to the front yards, even though that their front yards are, you know, a good section of it is inside of the existing right-of-way. I'm trying to minimize the impacts to, you know, the people who own property, you know, on Matson Road, to minimize those impacts as much as possible. So, we're, we're shifting the road to the east a little bit to minimize that. And then on the south of the, south end of Matson, the road is going to be shifted to the west. So, there's a pretty substantial tree line on the east side of the existing road. And so, we're, we're need to move that to the west, as well as there's some power poles that'll have to be relocated along that section as well.
And, and that work is being done by American Sand or...
Yes, not, not yet, so they're...
Not yet.
They're currently going through and trying to obtain their, their right-of-way.
What guarantee do, do we have that they will be successful in acquiring this permission to do that?
So, there, I mean, as far as, as...
Land acquisition or whatever it is?
There is no guarantee. I mean, it's, it's one of the deals that the, as, as part of the special use permit is, you know, they've got to upgrade Matson Road. of the special use permit is, you know, they've got to upgrade Matson Road, you know, so, and that's, moving the road over is, is part of that process to do that, because you gotta get it away. We, we need to have a wider road, you know, right there. It's a relatively narrow, narrow gravel road, and so, we need to move it away from those trees as, as much as possible. So, you know, it's-
I'm thinking of a compromise here, to some degree. Right now, the homeowners do not use Matson Road to the north to go out on a daily basis. You do not use it. If we close that road, and American Sand and Gravel uses a road, builds a road that's going north to that direction, and we have a flood event, I'm certain that American Sand and Gravel is gonna allow you to use their road to drive out, if that's your only way out. You don't think they will? Okay, well, no, I don't even wanna, I don't-
It doesn't go anywhere.
You can't, you can't talk from there, ma'am. If you want to talk, you have to come to the podium.
Well, and if the road you're referring to, the one that they're building on their property, it doesn't go anywhere except to their expanded sand pit. We won't be able to get out.
Well, Matson Road doesn't go anywhere now.
Well, they build up the riverbank, and believe me, the trucks and cars are using Farley Road to access Matson.
But that's not, that's not what we're talking, we're talking about vacating Matson Road. We're not talking about getting out to the north. That's what you were talking about, and there's no way out now.
Well, yes, there is. You can just go up, go around on Farley, and out. And, and the, the sand pit company is doing that now. Not on a regular basis, but I still see cars using trucks, equipment. And that's another thing. It seems to me, the cart before the horse again, the doctor took out a tree line, a hedge tree line, like, just anticipating that his, the request for vacation would be granted. It's, it's just like they're, they're moving forward before they're getting the permission to do so, is what it seems like to us.
I, I guess where I keep coming back to is your ability, right now, to use Matson Road to go out to the north. Do you use that road to go out north?
Not on a daily basis, but if the road floods, like it has, and washes out south of us, that's how we'd go, and that's the only way. And I think maybe some of the concerns that Charlie was expressing was, if they rebuild the road, as Justin said, they're gonna realign around the curve, which still is such a blind, I don't think you're gonna have enough room to make that not a blind corner. But when the road's under construction, how will we get out? What will we use to access our property?
What are they gonna use to access their property, if that happens?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, right now, you know, they're, they're using the road that they built across the private property, but when they make the improvements, whatever, to Matson Road, I don't know what they'll do.
So, you're saying the dead end, at the end of Matson, they're actually going around that dead end to access Farley Road? They're, I mean-
Yeah, you go off to the east.
Yeah, I mean, there's really not a road there. They're just accessing it off to the-
Yeah.
But it is, you, you can drive it.
You can drive it.
You can come right off of Farley Road, come around this bend, and drive right off of Madison, and get right back down to their houses. It's, you can do it today, but it's, it's been years since there's been any road activity.
Right.
But it is, it's a, you can tell where the old roadway is, because you can drive it.
It's just an access point, and there's been a lot of, I know someone had mentioned the tree line, that there's a lot of trees there that you can't get to Farley Road. Well, most of those trees are gone now, because somebody's been down there clearing all that timber. So, so like I said, I, we just, for emergency flooding purposes, it would be nice, or I just don't know what, what we'll do when they're realigning Matson Road, as Justin described. I just don't know where, how we will access our homes.
You give it another chance?
Yep, yep, yep.
That road is already, they've already built a road around that deal, and that's built on old concrete that Osop pushed over the riverbank. They've been pushing more concrete over the riverbank in the last month to extend the road into the, or the river out. They pushed so much dirt and concrete that Osop left on the top, and this last month, it's moved the whole river back. So, there is a road, but I wouldn't want to drive on it, because it's, there's 100 feet of concrete in there, and I don't think he's concerned about the, the road washing back. I don't think he'll do that, because there's so much concrete. I just wouldn't want to drive on the concrete going out. And like you said, we can drive around there already, if we just hadn't access. And I'm concerned about, if we had a flood event, or they're gonna have to build it, there's no road to get out while they're building this. So, what's the plan?
And just a quick question here, because this, this has been done a lot, but it is like, one of my other things is that, to suffice that, is like, the sand pit would have that private road going down through there. If it was such an emergency, would it be just a phone call to them to say, hey, can we drive down that path to get around? And if they have a path around that bend to get over to Farley to get out, could that be possible?
If they have it.
I mean, because-
I don't know what they're gonna do with-
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying. Is that, is that something that could be worked out with the sand pit? I don't, I don't know.
They're gonna have to get out, we're gonna have to get out. So, somewhere, they gotta get out when they're rebuilding it, because of, you know, there's no other road out of there when they build, rebuild that. Something's gonna have to happen.
But anyway, I just, that's just a thought, I'm just-
So, most of the road reconstruction, it's not like we're building a new road. We're elevating, you know, and moving a lot of dirt. You know, we're, we're trying to make a road improvement with, you know, again, having that minimal impact, and so, you know, most of the road is, the elevation of the road is gonna be just adding rock onto the existing roadbed that's there. And I did put a requirement on there that that road has to be accessible to the few residents along that during construction. Is there an exact plan? No, but when construction's going on, you know, my office is gonna keep an eye on, you know, on the construction to make sure access is maintained, and, you know, but it's gonna be an inconvenience for a while, you know, while, while they're, we're building the road, you know, but it's, it should be doable.
And the final result is gonna be a lot better for the homeowners there?
Yes.
It's, and just-
Mr. Chair, and, and Justin, just a quick question. Can we put off the vacation until that road is built, or improved?
Yes. We would probably have to go through the publication process again, you know, and the cost of sentencing that out.
What, what, my question would be, what, what would, good would that do? I mean, we're really only talking about the, the need is if there's a flood event. That's, that's the need to take this further. Am I correct?
So, if Matson Road to the south is flooded, you know, then I'm assuming then going to the north is not flooded, which I don't know if that's, I mean, I gotta take their word for it, you know, that it's, it's not, and, you know, there's no roadway there now, so it's gotta be also dry enough to, because you're, you're driving through a field.
Well, in the long run here, I mean, I'm looking at your staff recommendation. It says that you recommend vacating the portions of this Matson Road and Farley, which I still think is a reasonable plan, but I do think that the engineering department and road and bridge need to get with the landowners or the homeowners that are on the south end of there, and figure out a, a solution to them, to help them out, that does not include going out to the north.
Solution to?
Well, their concerns. I mean, I'm, I'm hearing lots of concerns here, but it, it resonates back to me that their concerns are if there's a flood event. That's the only time that that road would be of value to them. That's what I'm hearing.
Can I ask a question of Commissioner Shadwick? Was the reason for that question that maybe it would put a fire under, under, I don't know what entity it is, that's wanting the land vacated to get the road improvements in, so they could get that vacated?
Yes, partly. Also, I mean, the concerns seem to be that if something happens to the road, that they don't have any access, and if we do not okay the, the proposal, then they would still have that until it got fixed up. Does that make sense?
Very much.
Just, if, if, if we be, say, if we decide not to approve this right today and put it on hold, is there any legal rights or anything that, that the owner, Harbin, on both sides of this property, is there any legal right that he cannot go in there and take out these trees on that right-of-way?
So, as far as the trees along Matson, so the, the road right-of-way through there is a little weird, because typically, a road right-of-way is centered on the section line. However, in that section, for whatever reason, the entire road right-of-way is on the west side of the section line. The trees are on the east side of the section line, so those trees are outside of the, outside of the existing right-of-way.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so Todd actually called me and, you know, asked about that, and I told him, it's like, hey, it's outside the right-of-way, so I don't really have any authority.
Okay, thank you.
If I could ask a question of Mr. Roeburg to follow up on Commissioner Shadwick's, is, is postponing the vacation going to slow down the road improvements, or enhance, maybe speed up the road improvements?
No.
So, what impact does the vacation have to you?
Well, it's just to, to complete my agreement and what we're working towards with, with Gary on those properties, to join that together. As far as, it doesn't really, I mean, we're, we're motivated to, to improve that road as soon as we can, because our conditional use permit is we can't haul anything out on that road until that's improved. So, we're gonna want to be hauling something out at some point in time. And all of our sand is going across the river, so we can still pump sand, it's just when we haul dirt out of there. You know, so, I mean, we're motivated to do that. We're just working on acquiring, we have to move some power poles, so we're, we're working on getting that done. But, I mean, our goal is to probably be back on working on Matson Road within the next, you know, 30 days or so.
Another quick question. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, didn't mean to interrupt, but it's like, have we contacted the 80s, I mean, on both sides at that, where it comes on to Mentor Road and this Matson, where that's connected? It looks like the 80s have the property on both sides, the east and west side of that intersection?
Right. Audi, yeah, he, I have been in a little contact with him. We do have an easement agreement written up to move that to the west.
Okay.
I do not have that signed with him yet. He really would like to move it to the east, but it require taking all those trees out. You know, we're, Justin, you know, didn't want to do that, and I don't necessarily do either, so we're working that out with him on-
Gotcha.
-on, on moving. That's, that's the last piece of being able to improve this, is to, there, there was two easements we needed to acquire, one, one with Gary Harbin and one with Audi's. Gary assigned his easement agreement for Saline County, for Matson Road. Audi's, we're still, we're working on that.
Okay.
So, hope to have that done in the next week, and then we can-
Thank you.
... schedule that and get started.
Think Gary's got something?
Yeah. The tree, excuse me, the trees were taken out because we're trying to put a center pivot in, and also, the center pivot could go across Matson, so it was nice to be able to move the road so that we can irrigate the land. And then, the problem with going out Matson, trying to get to Farley, you're gonna have to go through cropland. And if there's an emergency, sure, I don't mind, but it's kind of irritating when you see the land all destroyed with people trying to sneak out through muddy cropland. So, it, it looked to me, like, looking all this over, that this was the easiest way for us to do cropping, and Todd was nice enough to allow, we gave him the permission, because the road is going through my property. But, to be able to put the irrigation in, it's really nice to be able to vacate that one little section that's not used. And, and only time I've ever seen anybody go down that road is to get into our land and steal lumber and wood, and we've got them on game cameras and so forth. So, it, there is no real good way out north towards Farley, except by going through cropland. And so, I, I think it's great to be able to upgrade Matson. I mean, that's gonna help everybody, including us getting in there to farm it.
And I think, I'll just say, as far as I'm concerned, and with the county, is that we appreciate you providing that easement, or whatever's transpired here, to get Madison around that, that bend there that we're looking at, yes, so.
Mr. Chairman, we've pretty well worked this thing over pretty good. I, I want to make one comment that I think the county is amiss at, and I don't know whose fault it is or anything else, but I'm, I'm disappointed that we get to this point, and the landlord, the homeowners that live on that road have not been notified up and, by us. That is a, a huge mistake, and probably could have alleviated a lot of conversation here today. Again, with, with all of that having been said, I'm gonna look back here at the staff recommendation, which says the road and bridge department recommends vacating portions of Matson Road and Farley Road, according to Resolution 24-20, 2401, and I do make that a motion.
Just to bring that up for a vote, I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 24, 2401 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Community Corrections Department update with Michelle Callum, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I am here for my semi-annual update for happenings in Community Corrections in our agency. We are continuing our collaboration with Central Kansas Mental Health, and we continue to move forward with more clients that are taking advantage of the mental health services that Central Kansas Mental Health offers at our agency. We have, Central Kansas Mental Health comes over weekly and does intake appointments with our clients as we schedule them, and then they have a group that meets in the afternoon, which is a, a therapy group that they are actually running in our office. A couple of weeks ago, I looked in the door, and we had eight people, I believe, in the group, so it's been steadily improving, so I'm encouraged to see that. When we first started, it was only two, or sometimes three. So, things are moving forward with that, which is good. It allows our clients to come to our office, see their officer, go to the group, or get their assessment, and kind of do a one-stop shop. So, I think it, it gives them a little bit easier access, and it's not quite as intimidating for maybe people who haven't sought out mental health therapy in the past. In December, we had a very successful drug court conference. We had approximately 175 community corrections staff, service providers, and judges from around the state attend the small conference that we put together. I want to extend a special thank you to Commissioner Sparks and to Phil Smith Haynes for coming out and supporting us and offering a few words at the beginning of that conference. And, and I felt like it was very successful. We, we had a really good turnout, way better than what we had really expected the year before. We had had about 75 people attend at our office, so we've expanded that, and I, I appreciate the support of the Commissioners as we continue to move forward with that. Since the last time I was here, we were awarded $26,775 in the Justice Assistance Grant, which we refer to as the JEG Grant. We used that to pay for our UpTrust messaging service, that we send messages to our clients. Community Corrections staff have participated in discussions regarding a possible creation of a behavioral health court. I talked to you about that a little bit in my September update. Those talks are continuing. I believe the court is looking at possible, some grants that they are trying to write, and, and getting things off the ground with that. As with any new thing, it's kind of a long process, so we appreciate being invited to collaborate with the court on those types of things. We have two staff members that provide- We have two staff members that provide volunteer work for Meals on Wheels at the Senior Center. They fill in on occasional shifts when, uh, the Senior Center needs a substitute and make deliveries to homebound people here in our community. We have two new employees. In November, Zachary Redden joined us on our juvenile side, and in February, Sarah Wheeler joined us in our Pretrial Services Division. Both of them are completing required training, and they are very quickly assimilating into our office, and they're very innovative and valued members of our staff. Cory Ward, who was already employed with us, has been promoted to the position of Pretrial Services Supervisor in December. He took that position with, uh, Andrew Pennant leaving our office and going to Riley County Community Corrections. Cory's had a very positive, um, impact on, on the pretrial division. Twenty twenty-three marks the ten-year anniversary of our Celine County Drug Court Program. I want to, again, thank you for the support that you have given to getting that program off the ground and your continued support. Um, we have had two hundred and eight people successfully complete Drug Court and graduate from the program. Two of those, uh, Drug Court graduates have gone on to become drug and alcohol counselors in the community, and one of those participates in Drug Court treatment on the treatment team every week, which is nice to see that, um, that's a continuing progress that, that she's continuing to make. Um, Drug Court, I believe, is a very valuable program here, um, and our, your financial support is, it's integral. I mean, we, we really do appreciate that. Taxpayer funds that you allocate to, to that program truly have a direct impact on people every day. Our current daily population, we have four hundred and seventy-nine clients on adult intensive supervision. Three of those are Ottawa County cases. Ninety-two of those, um, are in our Drug Court Program. We have a hundred and thirty-four clients that are currently being monitored through our Pretrial Services, and we have a hundred and fifteen, um, clients that are part of our various juvenile services division, and six of those are Ottawa County cases. From my last report in September of twenty twenty-three until March, um, we had juvenile intake and assessment staff that responded to a hundred and fifty-nine incidents in, in the county and in the city, and sixteen of those occurred in Celine County, or in Ottawa County. And I think I mentioned the last time that that can be, that's not necessarily a hundred and fifty-nine different people, it's just a hundred and fifty-nine incidents. So, we may get a call at two o'clock in the morning about, um, a kiddo, and then, three days later, at eight o'clock at night, we may get a call about that same, that same child. So, it's, it, those numbers can sometimes be a little bit deceiving. Our future plans, um, we hope to continue to be involved in discussions for District Court, um, for their Veterans Court, which is headed by Judge Johnson, and the Behavioral Health Court, which is headed by Judge Peterson. I think those are two very valuable discussions that are going on and would really benefit, um, a number of people within the community. Uh, my staff continues to be involved with the Crisis Intervention Team, and those, that is a community partnership with many, uh, other agencies, um, Central Kansas Mental Health, Line of Grace, CAPS, which is the Child Advocacy and Parenting Services, CKF Addiction Treatment, and St. Francis Ministries are all involved in that joint effort, and so, we, we continue to be a part of that. We have started plans for our next annual Drug Court and Probation Conference. We have secured the dates of September seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth at the Webster Conference Center, and we are looking to expand that again. We are working closely with, uh, Judge from Hayes, Judge Braun. He's very active, uh, with Drug Court-type things, and, um, he's been very, been very helpful to us. So, we're hoping to have some breakout sessions where we can, um, give some small trainings on drug testing, officer safety, evidence-based practices, and incentives and sanctions, and supervisory skills training. We're also looking for keynote speakers right now. Um, I think we have one secured, but we're, we're still waiting to get that finalized. Uh, we are also beginning work on completing our annual comprehensive plan, which is our large grant that comes from the state of Kansas, so we will have that ready to be delivered to Kansas Department of Corrections at the beginning of May. Recently, we have been in, uh, meetings with Pastor Alan Smith from St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, which is just two doors down from our agency, and we are beginning collaboration on a mentoring program for our juvenile clients. Um, this pro, this program was initiated by our newest staff, or one of our newest staff members, Zach Redden, and he and his fiancee are very active members of that congregation. And he came to his supervisor, Chris Ann Barnaby, and I, and asked about starting a mentoring group, and we've been very excited about that, so we are working on developing, uh, an MOU with them so that we can, um, start work on that. So, that's a, that's an exciting program. It's something that Kansas Department of Corrections has wanted for a long time. They really want you to reach out and do some faith-based programming, and we've just never had the opportunity, I guess. It's, it's hard to just call a church that you're not affiliated with and ask them to be a, a partner with you, so I'm very excited to have Zach kind of head this up. Um, and we have also been working with Celine County IT to, um, secure a software program for our Pretrial Services Division. That is something that we haven't had for about a year. We had something, it wasn't working, had to get rid of that, so we've gone back to a lot of spreadsheets. It's very cumbersome for my staff, so we finally found a software program. It has very promising results. In my, my written report to you, I said that we were awaiting a formal bid. We have received that bid, and now I am waiting for a contract so that we can move forward with sending that to Mr. Montoya and presenting more of that to you for, um, finalization of that. For my budget update, in February, we received our allocation information from Kansas Department of Corrections, and they advised us that we would be flat-funded again for, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which is KDOC's fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which goes from July first to June thirtieth. Our total grant dollars from KDOC are approximately two point three million dollars. Those funds have remained the same for the past, the four past grant cycles. Um, with our most recent funding increase in FY twenty-two was available, but it was available under restricted use. It was merely for personnel, it had to be, it, it had a lot of, um, attachments to it. So, any true increase that we have gotten hasn't come for, at least for grant cycles. So, considering that, um, we are flat-funded and, and expenses continue to go up and personnel charges go up, um, I want to thank you for the support that you give us. Um, without support of Celine County and the Justice Assistance Grant and those eight-eight-eight funds that you also allocate to us, um, it, it would be difficult to serve this portion of our community. So, I, I appreciate everything that you do for us and the support that you give us. Do you have any questions?
Well, I wanna thank you for your, your guys' diligence, you know, applying for those grants and everything, because it sure makes it a whole lot easier, and it comes down to the bottom line, to see what, what is left. The only question I really have is, you said on, uh, you had two hundred and eight people go through Drug Court. Do you have very many repeat offenders, uh, that come through that, go through?
We do have a few. Um, a, a lot of times, people who, um, reoffend, maybe don't qualify to come back for Drug Court. We do have some people that have completed Drug Court more than once. Um, there are several women in the community that work at a restaurant here in Salina, at a local restaurant that I see on a regular basis, who are graduates of our Drug Court Program, and, um, I believe that one of them went through the program twice. And, um, sometimes people stumble and fall, but, uh, we, we like to be there for them and be there to assist them if they, if they wanna get up and try it again. Um, we do have some requirements about Drug Court, and so, i-if you, um, if you are a drug dealer, we do not allow you into Drug Court. So, we look at the criminal history and what the current charges are and that kind of stuff, so sometimes people don't qualify for reentry into Drug Court, but we do have some, we do have some, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Health Department update with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Bear with me a little bit, I'm trying to get over this spring cold, so. Soon as he's able to move that, so, all right. So, what we are looking at here is for the first quarter of this year, what would be third quarter of our grant year, which, uh, normally runs that July through, um, June. Yeah, it's not, no. Technical. You can just hit next slide as we go through it then. So, while we get to the next slide, one of the actions that you took earlier in approving those, uh, signature pages was the last step that I needed, um, in order to submit all of our aid to local grant applications for this, uh, coming grant year, which, I have to say, is probably the first time that we will be able to, um, have everything submitted a week early. You can go ahead and do that. There you go. Um, usually, we are kind of right up to that last minute, even with the narrative parts of some of those grants. So, um, I'm excited to be able to get that off my plate, uh, earlier than normal. We continue to work on the implementation of Patagonia. A lot of the daily processes of moving from paper-based records to electronic, or electronic medical records, um, has shown, shown significant improvement. Part of what we're still continuing to work with are those connections into state reporting systems, so like BIBI Z is the State Immunization Reporting System, uh, CAHIL, which is the Kansas, um, Health and Environment Laboratory. And so, it's getting that information sent through from the electronic health record to their networks and back. And then, uh, DAZI is a, um, reporting system that the Kansas Department of Health and Environment has for, uh, a few different programs, where they collect information, um, about utilization and such. And just like trying to connect any two networks, there's always hiccups in trying to get the two to talk to each other and be consistent about it, so that's still a little bit of an ongoing. Uh, staff recently attended the twenty twenty-four Governor's, uh, Public Health Conference, which, I have a picture a little bit later on, um, which was the most attended conference, I think that it has been since its inception, about fifteen, sixteen years ago, um, which had over almost five hundred and fifty people, public health professionals across the state, from local health departments, the State Health Department, and, uh, some of our academic partners. Um, and then, speaking of academic partners, as we continue to partner with those, especially like the KU nursing program here, um, we do have a KU nursing student, so you'll see that face if you come over, um, throughout the spring semester. WIC has had an increase in their caseload. Um, for most of twenty twenty-three, they stayed between eight sixty-seven and nine fifty. The last few months, though, they've been up to, uh, um, ten thirty-five, um, at the end of February. We really don't know, right at this point, what is causing that, or if it's going to be kind of an ongoing in, uh, influx of clients. Um, so we'll just have to kind of keep monitoring those numbers. Um, but it has really been pushing them on their timetables to make sure everybody's getting seen and processed, um, within their, their stated timetables. Childcare licensing, um, over, you know, that, that three-month period, a hundred and two inspections of different types, so that's illegal complaint, uh, which might be somebody providing, um, or a complaint of somebody providing childcare who isn't licensed, a regulatory complaint where someone, um, may witness something or feel that something is not up to regulations, um, including initial licensing, so anybody trying to open a childcare, uh, whether in home or a center, compliance for any issues that are identified and annual licensing. And a lot of these are, are time-consuming, and, you know, as regulators, um, going through the book, make sure everything is, is marked and correct, um, and really trying to make sure that it is not only meeting all the regulations, but it's a place where we have our children for, you know, sometimes eight hours a day, so making sure that it's a, a safe place as well and meeting all of those things. And they've been, they've completed their grant applications as well. Next slide. Uh, MCH, uh, the head staff attend the Public Health Conference. Sherry Doctor, who is our MCH coordinator, presented as part of the MCH pre-conference as one of their subject matter experts. They began their Incredible Babies class in March. Small turnout, but it was the first one, so we expect to see increases in that. They are working on some public service announcements around not only just MCH services, but also, um, how that connects with other providers in the community, uh, infant mortality rate, um, which has seen a slight increase here, but not just here, across the state and across the nation. Of course, promotion and education of MCH services to all the local providers, because we are the only place in town that provides, uh, becoming a mom training for those who are, um, pregnant or for their partners, and whether it's their first baby or their fourth baby, um, and the Incredible Babies classes, and they've completed their aid to local applications, which their application is a small novel in terms of its, um, write-up, so that one takes a significant amount of time. Home health is still short two nursing positions, however, we may have some opportunity. We've had conversations in the last couple years about whether we could use LPNs in providing home health services. However, the Kansas State Board of Nursing, um, did not show or have anything that was very clear on the distinction of scope of practice between LPNs and RNs. And when we would reach out to them, they would say to see this Nurse Act, which, if you've read any type of legislative act, there's lots of room for interpretation and lots of times not very clear. Uh, this kept coming up in several conversations across the state. So, called in conjunction with some of the partners, I think, including this, the Board of Nursing, developed the first Scope of Practice Guide, which then shows by type, for instance, LPN, RN, what they can do, what they can't do in different settings. Um, this is the first opportunity that we've really had to be able to look at the organization or, or, um, how our home health is organized, what can we utilize, what could an LPN do versus an RN? So, we're working on those job descriptions, um, and how that workflow would work in order to try and broaden the pool of, uh, of staff that are out there to, you know, complete this work. Next slide. Um, Ryan White, our HIV case management. So, I wanna note, though, that, uh, keep in mind that our Ryan White folks, which consists of two, uh, case managers, covers a thirty-one county area of clients. The state's divided up into, uh, seven regions. Many of their clientele are, um, experienced homelessness at different times, other, you know, significant, uh, and potential impacts to, um, their lives, and just the fact that medical care of, of that nature is not always cheap, even though they work with, you know, the different providers and the state programs to make sure that their healthcare is provided. So, one of the things that they do is they have an emergency pantry, not only to help those, you know, offset some of that other, um, some of those other disparities that they may have. And most of it's been prepackaged canned stuff. Recently, though, we've, we got one freezer, and then with the, uh, senior services doing some of their upgrades, we got another freezer from them, so we have contracted for several months now with Meals on Wheels to purchase using grant dollars, which has been authorized, and then be able to provide, um, those frozen meals, which provide some, thank you, some, uh, fresher options, um, for clients that may be a little bit more nutritional and beneficial for them. KU, about every other month, KU staff that deal with HIV, they come up from Wichita. We have KU clinics, they do a lot of the, um, checkups, follow-ups, providing either care, follow-up testing, et cetera, um, at the Health Department. Um, and although the January one had to be canceled because of the ice and snow that we had during that time, um, the one in March was able to, uh, provide outreach to twenty-five clients. A lot of times, too, our staff will put together, um, bags of items to assist them, because for this KU clinic, many are coming from counties far away, so this KU clinic is not just serving those in Celine County, it's serving the entire region that they cover. So, it's, again, it's just a little bit of something to help offset with, uh, some of those, um, other expenses. Um, in February, our health educator announced that she was leaving due to a family move, and we have since been able to find a replacement. Uh, Megan Rico started on the eighteenth. Um, that being said, though, it, it put a little pause on some of the things that we were working on while we were trying to find somebody to replace her. One of those projects, um, that had put a slight pause on was the new opioid dashboard. One of those projects that had put a slight pause on was the new opioid dashboard, or the old one that we have that was through My Sidewalk, which quite frankly was not meeting our functionality, and it costs a lot of money each year, so that will expire next month. We've been working on a page within our website that will be a dedicated page to it. Until I had my tutorial, I didn't realize how much goes into building the webpages on the website, so it's not as, it's not like throwing some stuff on PowerPoint, it's a little bit more complicated, so that's taken a little bit longer to get it to where we want to, but we hope to have that out by mid-April. Some of the things that we'll include will, of course, be local resources, who do you reach out to, where do you, where do you get help, et cetera, but also we're intending to try and have semi-real-time local information related to opioid use and overdoses on there that we weren't getting from My Sidewalk. And additionally, it'll save us $16,000 a year, because that was our annual cost for the My Sidewalk platform. Oh, went too far. All right, so as you may remember, we published our first annual report a couple of months I have a better picture from that bottom one from the conference. I was asked to co-present with Dr. Sarah Jolly from Wichita State on a session that was called Rising from the Ashes: Rebuilding the Image of the Health Department, and we had about 60 or 70 people in attendance at that session. One of the things that we have done, too, is that anytime somebody leaves, we not only look at, you know, does their job description still make sense, are there changes that we need to make, but we also look at how does that fit within how everything else is operating. So at the end of December, when our deputy, my deputy director left, and we looked at how the whole administration area was operating, what were the real need, because unfortunately during our last hiring, we were still in the middle of COVID, so it was really kind of hard to stop and take a deep dive into that one. So we did some redistribution and reorganization with our administration department, split some of those tasks off to where I have taken over a lot of the grant reporting, account specialist has taken over some of the day-to-day, we do constant, you know, communication and teaching of each other so that we build redundancy, but it has actually resulted in streamlining some of our processes at administration and cutting out a position in administration, which also helped with our budget overall, too. County audit, of course, with doing all that, county audit still went fine, we didn't really have any kind of issues. We'll be getting ready for our home health audit coming up, and I don't anticipate anything there. Like I said, I'll be able to submit all the aid to local grant applications this afternoon, working on building out the webpage for the advisory council, and I completed my term finally as being the called board president. Normally, like I said, it's a 12-month term. I did 18 months. Brought in a new executive director when Dennis Griesel left, and I was actually quite happy to hand that off to somebody else, not to let them handle that for a while, but I'll be past president for this year. So, of course, I'm not going to try and point myself out, but that was about 500 of us that were gathered down in Wichita for the conference, and when I say it, you know, it significantly increased. I think two years ago, the attendance was around 3, 350, and so we outgrew Manhattan and anywhere else, so now we had it down at Hyatt Regency, where KC usually ends up being it down there. Oddly enough, last time I talked a little bit about elevated blood lead and contamination of cinnamon applesauce packets. In the meantime, there was also another FDA alert about these types of cinnamon that have been found contaminated with lead, and let me reiterate again, there is no safe level of lead, so anything that you're consuming that has lead in it, you need to immediately stop consuming and throw these items out. The link is up there, or if you just go onto like Google and type in FDA lead and cinnamon, it will take you to that information as well, to show you those in better context than what you might be able to see here. So coming up tomorrow, I've been invited to attend with the group who is going to the Governor's Proclamation signing for National Public Health Week, which is next month, April 1st through the 7th, and I will also be bringing a proclamation for the commission next Tuesday as well. We will start mosquito surveillance again this summer, so that way we will have more local, hands-on knowledge if there are any types of mosquito diseases like West Nile that happen to show up, and we'll be able to alert the public to that. The intent is also to build out some additional information on our website, of course, developing our county budget, the opioid needs assessment, which we had to put on pause for a little while during this transition of health educator. We also have the regional medical surge with the healthcare coalitions that would be coming up, and then staff attending the Transforming Local Government Conference next month. Our budget right now, it's still early in the year, but we are looking pretty much on track with kind of where we were last year. Of course, our expense is a little less, but we've also had salary lines that were in our budget that haven't been used in the first quarter of this year. So with that, if there are any questions, that concludes my report.
Jason, you noted that the deputy director left. Is that the deputy director of the Seline County Health Department?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Jason.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners comments?
Don't see any.
Announcements?
I just have one I wanted to ask. I needed to find out how many of the commissioners are planning on attending Senator Moran's presentation this afternoon? If you're planning on attending, if there's more than three of us, we need to get something out that, or we need...
Well, if there's more than three that attend, we just make sure that we don't converse with each other regarding county business. All five can attend.
I won't be there.
I won't be there. I won't be there. I'll be there. Any other announcements? Did we miss someplace your report, Philip? I mean...
I did not have anything this week. I will have one for next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, make a motion for adjournment?
Second.
If we have a motion second, I'll favor say aye.
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 Passes 5-0. Thank you.